It is five o'clock PM, Tuesday, July 8, 2025. I will call this special town meeting of the town of La Pointe to order. Hopefully, everyone has had a chance to sign in. If you haven't, there's a sign in sheet at the door. Is there any public comment for the town meeting? John?
I would like to support the idea that we have a town consider some way of accepting Steve's Bob's Studio, being able to continue the...
Thank you.
It's important, I think, in best order to support business.
And we will have public comment before the town board meeting. And that might be a more appropriate place. Right now, unless there's any more public comment, we have one item of business for the town meeting. And that is to establish the hourly wage to pay an elected town officer for serving as a town employee pursuant to statute 60.374B1. And that is for elected treasurer Katie Abbott to also serve as the short-term rental administrator as an employee. And state statute allows for an elected town officer to serve as a town employee with limits. First, it cannot exceed $15,000 in a calendar year. And secondly, it must be approved by a meeting of the townspeople, of the electors. And so I have talked to Katie. She is interested in serving as the short-term rental administrator. I believe we talked about $25 an hour for up to 600 hours a year, which would get you to the $15,000 limit. Is there any discussion?
I have one question. So if Katie, let's say she doesn't want to run for town treasurer again, so we get a new town treasurer, does that person take over the duties that Katie has?
The question, Mike, what we have in the job description is that under license and certifications, is that preference will be given to the incumbent town treasurer. So it doesn't mean that it's an automatic. But if the town treasurer wants to do it, we would give them...
Ask their preference.
Yeah. And the thinking frankly that we had behind this was taking it away from the zoning administrator who is already very busy in the summer months. And the town treasurer is actually not quite as busy in the summer months. And also, the town treasurer is the person who collects the accommodation taxes that are related to the short-term rental permits. And so you're going to have a really good continuity between the person issuing the permits and making sure that we're receiving the accommodation taxes. So that's the, that's the thinking on that. Any other questions or discussion? Jim?
I'm wondering what that accommodation tax amount is and where it's going to go. I think, does it just go into general fund? Did it go into the zoning column in their budget? Does it go into treasurer?
It goes in the general fund. It's considered a payments from the public.
And to the chamber.
And, oh yeah. So 70% of the accommodation taxes, and right now our rate is 8%. 70% of that, we collect the whole thing. And then we have to turn around and give 70% of it to the Chamber of Commerce. So, you know, it's also the person, the treasurer in this case, keeps track of that payment and actually makes that payment.
What's the zoning budget? Were those funds going into the zoning budget?
No, never part of the zoning budget. Yeah, it was all just... I don't think so. I mean...
May I?
Yeah, go ahead.
It was never done. When I started, I would speak to Ed about it, and he would keep a partial list, but he would constantly go to the treasurer, get part of that information, go back to him. But the room accommodation tax never touched anything to do with zoning. It only had to do with the general fund and then going over to the Chamber of Commerce. But when you do a single permit fee, then that goes into the zone, that goes into the, it gets brought in and done through the zoning, because that is a zoning permit. And that is in itself goes into that fund. So it is part of that area, which is why this job description is a zoning job. And that's why it was really tricky, because we had 50% of that, but then afterwards it gets tracked by the treasurer. And so it was a tricky job to have two people mismatching what they were keeping track of and who started it, but who was following up with it. And then moving forward, the zoning administrator would then have to make sure that they were keeping, complying with all these permit things. Because at any point they stop, well, then they can't have the room accommodation permit, you know, be, it can't be in effect anymore, right? Or, or the short-term rental can't be in effect anymore if they're out of compliance. And so it became a back and forth of, well, who's still doing okay, who's not? And then it would get all murky. So if you have one person who can follow all of it, pay attention to all of it, and track of all of it, it makes it a lot easier moving forward.
So you're going to keep track of who has and doesn't pay the fees for...
Fees for all of them.
What do you, what do you do if there's a violation? Who, who enforces that?
That goes back to zoning. Because the enforcer is always going to enforce. I was keeping track of the permit, the fees, and the money.
And all that information will go back to the ZA also, so he'll be able to know?
Yes. Because that is their main job. My job is to issue the permits, make sure they're in compliance, so I will be watching and taking care of it, but I am not enforced.
Great. I will make a motion then that the town people approve paying treasurer Katie Abbott $25 an hour for up to 600 hours a year to serve as short-term rental administrator, assuming that the town board hires her for that position.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
You said earlier that this position would not stay with the treasurer, that every year it could go somewhere else?
I think that once, you know, somebody has the job, right? Like if Katie has the job, she, these are two separate things. One is that, you know, the town wants to hire somebody, preferably the treasurer, to do this job. But we have to get the townspeople approval to pay an elected official, okay? That person still is a hired employee. And we wouldn't, like with any employee, we wouldn't say, you know, you're doing this one year at a time. You know, I mean, every employee is at will, right? This would be at will also.
Right. And so if Katie were to leave for whatever reason, the town treasurer would or would not have these duties?
It would be up to...
They have the preference.
They'd have a preference on getting the job. The town board would still approve whether or not they got it.
Well, that seems kind of counterproductive, if you're going to have someone do the job for a while, and the next person that does the treasurer's job, this is not part of their job description anymore? It's kind of a possibility that they would do it? Why not, if you're going to assign this job to the treasurer, make that part of their job description?
Oh, we, we don't have control over the statutory job description of town treasurer.
Who does?
The legislature.
Same one who says the ratio for the 70, 30%. State statutes do. We don't.
But...
There's nothing in states...
You have a job description for town treasurer?
No.
No.
It's in the statute. There's no job description. There's a, there is a list of duties in the state statute for the treasurer, but the town board has no control.
We can't supersede what the state statute says.
But you can add on more duties.
No.
We can't supersede it.
No.
Can the town, as an elected...
No.
How is she doing this then?
As an employee. Strictly as an employee.
That's why we have to have the meeting.
A little confused.
So she'll have two jobs. She's elected as the treasurer, and we're hiring her as the short-term rental administrator. So she'll have two jobs. And she's allowed to have a job with the town as long as it doesn't go over $15,000 a year, even though she's an elected official.
And we do have a precedent of this. When Michaela was the town clerk, she worked for the library. And so we brought it to the community back then. And so it has been done before.
The easiest way to think about it, Jim, is she's an elected position, and this is a, we hired her as an employee now, or not yet, but...
If you won't, yes.
Yeah.
And that adds $15,000 more into the...
Oh, two, $600.
I don't work all those hours, and we do not spend...
And it should also reduce the amount of time, obviously, that the zoning administrator spends on it. And I'm going to guess it's going to be pretty close to a wash.
That would be my next question, too.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, you're in none. All in favor, raise your hand, please, if you're an elector. Yes, you are. Unopposed? Abstained? Great. Well, I think that concludes our business. The motion carries. And now, could the town board choose? They can hire and pay treasurer to do this, or Katie, to do this additional job in addition to her treasurer's job. Is there a motion to adjourn the special town meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting, town meeting is adjourned. And now, I will call to order the regular town board meeting of the town of La Pointe on July 8, 2025. And I will take a roll call. Mike Anderson?
Here.
Amy Baxter?
Here.
Susan Brenner?
Here.
Samantha Dobson? Glenn Carlson here. And we also have our town administrator and our town clerk. And we actually have our town treasurer with us, as well as members of the, a great number of members of the public. Oh, and our public works director, who's sitting in the back row for a change. I don't think why, but, um, thank you. Is there any public comment? Yes, Paul?
Just to reiterate what I said the last time, we have a veteran that's retiring this September. Please consider not filling that position in order for cost savings for the town's overburdened taxpayer. Second thing is, when it comes to any CUP that you're going to discuss or act upon now or in the future, please put an emphasis on the zoning part and not the economic development part.
Thank you, Paul. Any other comments? Yes, Steve?
Um, Steve McQ, who's here today to answer any questions about the CUP and correct some of the accusations or thoughts that were put forward during that campaign, along with, in those misrepresentations.
Thank you, Steve. Any other public comment? John?
Yeah, it's, we've got more than that to think about tonight. What you got to think about is the members of the TPC who issued the permit in the first place. They were aware that it was a commercial building. They needed commercial inspections. I myself went to the TPC for informants of that. They told me that they were just going to wait and see if there was any complaints. So I would suggest when they come up for reappointment, you guys work back and see who those people were. Don't appoint them again. They are not fulfilling the need of the town by, by using the rules and regulations set forth. They're making their own rules up as it goes.
Thank you, John. Rick?
There's one of the busier builders on the island who pulls, you know, I try to tell people to appropriately pull the permits, you know, from the zoning administrator through the UDC. I'm noticing a lot of buildings with, a lot of buildings happening on the island with all the permits property posted, whether they have them or not. I'm not here to, but, um, and I'm just fairly concerned about the town kind of backing a big project that's happening where I, it was obvious that the paperwork hasn't been done right. That's the only, the only holdup. So, you know, people have gotten fired over it, and it's just concerning me. I, you know, the other builders I talked to on the island feel about the same way. You know, everyone should have to pull the permits the same way as each other. And, you know, it's Congress for the town, and it's all, it's done everywhere else. So I wish the new ZA, you know, a lot of luck. He's, I think he can, he's going to build that way.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Rick. Any other public comments? And Rick, since you mentioned it, I should introduce our new, and I will get to the taxpayer, but our new zoning and planning administrator, Rich Kula, is here with us. And he started on...
Last Monday.
Last Monday, okay. Hit the ground running, so I appreciate you being here. And there was a hand up by someone online. That was just your mouse, okay?
Never mind.
Okay. Oh, okay, thank you, Evan. Late submission of his MERC report, he apologizes. All right. Any other public, yes?
I would like to support, and I've been a little confused on the topic for a few years, as far as having a visitor or a person, anyway, whatsoever, considering regarding that, how it could adversely affect anybody. The room we're talking about, size of this room, and it's that we live in the sky, so I don't understand, like, we would not be allowed at that position.
Thank you, Steve. Any other public, yes?
I'm wondering how that will affect how we view people that do pop up concerts, and where that's going to be allowed and not allowed, and how we can protect ourselves as musicians, and to allow ourselves the freedom to have opportunity to express our art.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, moving on, administrative reports. We have the town admin, oh. Jim, did you want me to read your comment?
One minute to that.
Okay. Town administrators' report. Any questions or comments for Max on his report? Okay.
I have it.
Go ahead.
Max, on trash work, additional cleaning of the cemetery chapel, does that mean that we got a ton?
No, I...
You're just still working on it.
Working on it.
Oh.
Quick question. Actually, ambulance director up there, is Sarah resigning from her position?
No, she's trying to, she will propose, and I, she's not ready to present in court. They'll do it next time. She's proposing that she change her job description. She would be a part-time EMT and combine that with ambulance EMS director and have a full-time job.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions or comments for Max? Okay, public works director's report. Any questions or comments?
I got a question for Pete.
Go ahead.
Any progress made with the waters?
All today, other than that, I have work.
Hey, any other?
You're doing a great job with the backup parks employees, so good job.
Definitely. And, and when you do get extra people, I will have some more questions about data, but we won't, we won't ask data questions yet.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions for Pete? Comments, okay. MERC supervisors' report. Okay, airport managers' report. Oh, and by the way, if anyone is interested, our new zoning and planning administrator had like 29 years with the FAA? 22 years? Was responsible for like 650 airports in the Midwest? So, um, I'm sure be happy to talk to you about airport things. So, any other questions or comments for Paul's report? Planning and zoning administrator? Okay. And managers' report? Police chief's report? Okay? Fire chief's report? Health inspectors' report? Do we have unanimous consent to place these reports on file?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. Was there a question on the ambulance report?
No.
No, I thought there was a letter, and it was within the report.
Uh, so we have unanimous consent. Moving on, public works. We have under road stock and harbor, a purchase order for a tire. Replace four tires on the five-yard dump truck. It is in the budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase order for the four tires for the five-yard dump truck in the amount of $1,887.80.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thanks, Pete, for checking off. That's in the budget.
Yeah.
All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, under committees, planning and zoning, discussion of the McQ conditional use permit. And I did have a conversation earlier today with Steve, and he did clear up some, I think, misperceptions that I think might have been out there. And one is that this live music is all taking place indoors. And so we're not going to have a Woodstock situation. And the fact that it's indoors also, I, I believe, limits the number of cars that might possibly be parked on Benjamin Boulevard. And my understanding is that, Steve, you would be fine with one night a week for live music.
Yeah. And we actually have parking for such cars, depending on if they're the large pickup trucks. If they're not the large pickup trucks, actually, room for more.
Okay, thank you. Um, and this is, we're just discussing this tonight. I didn't put it down for approval tonight. We have a couple of weeks. So if people do have comments, please seek out a town board member, or Max, or Rich, and share your, your concerns. Are there any specific concerns or questions that anyone on the town board has at this moment?
I got two questions. One is if the TPC puts restrictions on a CUP, and if somebody violates those restrictions, can't the CUP then say, you're done? Just like MISA. I mean, you put CUPs on MISA, and if they violate them, they're done? If you put restrictions on something?
The fact that if you put restrictions on and it's violated, you would think that...
So what would his incentive to violate them would be zero?
Right. Right, yeah. Sorry.
What's violating? What's a kind of figure out?
Well, I'm saying if the, if the TPC puts restrictions on a CUP, and if the person who gets the CUP violates those restrictions, can't they withdraw the CUP? That was my question. So the answer, yes.
The active names?
Oh, conditional use permit. And conditional means it has conditions. So anyhow, we're going to limit the conversation to members of the board. Any further?
Well, and I would say for, as far as parking on Benjamin Boulevard, I would ask Pete and the road crew to just keep an eye on it, because you don't want to start pushing the gravel into the ditch if, you know, you get a big crowd or something. And then over the years, all of a sudden, you got to, you know, more and more and more and more pushing over and causing a problem. It's eight people. I don't think you have to... Actually, I don't want the little villagers to go, too.
Okay. All right. Town board members, are you satisfied with the discussion so far and ready to take this under consideration at our next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Moving on, I would propose that we move item 5A Building Inspector Contract to, uh, right after lawsuits and legal issues. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move that down to later in the meeting. Next item, vouchers?
I will make a motion to approve the vouchers in the amount of $30,666.46.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have minutes of the regular town board meeting of June 10th, and the regular town board meeting of June 24th.
I'll make a motion to approve regular town board meeting minutes from June 10, 2025, and the regular town board meeting minutes from June 24, 2025.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, under emergency services, police department. We have a recommendation to hire a part-time fleets officer. You should have that in your packet.
Have you worked with John before?
I did when I was in Moana, and he's working for us on TV right now.
Okay, good.
And he happens to be Carl's brother.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's that too.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to approve hiring John Williams as a part-time police officer. 2603 an hour for $400.
Not per week.
$400.
$400.
$400 total, I guess.
Yes. This is written wrong, not to exceed $400.
I'll second.
Um, moved and seconded, any discussion?
You know, Tom, you're in charge, right? No.
Well, Phil's not here.
So just, just that everything's completed with the training and standards, the Department of Justice and all.
He's done everything. He's getting his entire packet together, which he's already got, um, bar and ready for him. He's already active. The reason he likes to come to us is he's part of overtime in Ashland and the taxing him at a higher rate. And then if he came over here and worked part-time. It will also alleviate our overtime issue because I can't do it without having enough bodies. And I don't know if those come back, so I need to start planning.
Okay, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Um, next, public comment, B, and Jim, I didn't forget about you. Um, this is a public comment from, uh, Jim Peters. To town of La Pointe board members, I voted to approve the McHugh CUP because the applicant is trying to come in compliance with our zoning ordinance by changing the use of his property from a home occupation to a home business. The town plan commission, TPC, placed six conditions on the CUP. I, I agree with the first one, requiring a commercial inspection, but believe numbers two, three, five, and six are unnecessary as they are already covered in other town ordinances. I disagree with condition number four because this art studio had live music for the past three years without a single complaint. This home business is located in zoning district W1, which requires a minimum 20-acre parcel and results in few close neighbors. After being notified of this CUP application, no property owner expressed opposition. Possible replacement for condition number four. Live music is limited to two musicians and must end by 9:00 PM. And if three noise ordinance violations are received and verified by the police department in one calendar year, this CUP is null and void. And then he adds, uh, the town board also, uh, has the option to add this condition. The CUP will terminate if and when the property is sold. Every CUP received by the TPC is reviewed and considered on its own merit. You will not be setting a precedent when approving this CUP application with these conditions. Thank you for your consideration in this matter, Jim Peters. Are there any other public comments? Paul.
I mentioned earlier, we will have comments on the CUP. Please note, that's for a public hearing. As per the zoning handbook, it should be in the CA's office. You shouldn't be taking any more public comment. Just want a second public hearing, just to carry on precedent. You wanted something to say about this that was at the public hearing, which was several weeks ago. Not now.
Thank you, Paul. Any other public comment?
Charlie, just follow up to Jim Boyter, I'm on the TPC along with Jim. I think the conditions are fair considering it's, uh, in a rural area, 20-acre zoning. Home business is just that, it's home. It's not retail grade, which you'll find in the commercial zone. And I think it abide by everything in the conference plan. Please review that as well. And I fully support Steve and his endeavors for a home office, excuse me, home studio gallery. But beyond that, I think you're asking for a little too much in that zoning district. If it was down where it used to be in the commercial zone, by all means, you can have music just like any other place downtown. But when you start getting into the rural area, I think you're opening up a, a large can of worms.
Thank you, Charlie. John?
Yeah, this morning I emailed a whole bunch of permits to James Price, sent in a bunch of checks. And then later on, I was informed that he was not going to be able to help me because he was going to be terminated. Um, so I've been looking at the board. Um, I've got customers, they need permits, they need pedestals wired, they're hooked up by Excel. They need his signature. There is a date in August I was told, the Excel is coming over here. Um, if they don't make that change, they can be bumped out by October. It's not, it's, and it's affecting, gonna affect my pay. Um, I do contracts, it says I want money upfront and the rest upon completion. Completion is hooked up for next step. So I'm looking at the town board here, if they're gonna get rid of the inspector, what is your plan and how will this work?
Thank you, John. Any other public comment? Rick?
I share the same concerns because, uh, I'm the same boy, I have people that want their homes to be built. Just, uh, it's been going, you know, we had a little pause and firmly for a while it wasn't a problem and all, but I share the same concerns.
Do you have any other public comments?
I support, uh, A P's letter 100% perfectly written, right to the point.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I support you, you are the best.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, um, next is liquor licenses. Any, anything else? Uh, lawsuits and legal issues, any update? Fairness.
We filed supplement brief with the Tax Appeals Commission yesterday. Very great. Um, rough, kind of cherry picks some of the comments that, I don't know, Judge, Judge Anderson made. His ruling. Once they make our, the person there never was a transfer, which is the key word in, in. And the second one of those, a little bit similar to that is that the county has the authority to, to determine their allocation of funds instead of that's within their authority. Tax Appeals Commission ruled for us, that would be nullifying their authority to decide how they allocate the resource. Um, our, our lawyers were waiting here from us. I think you and I will call them, you know, tomorrow to see if we want some supplement brief file.
Thank you, Max. Any questions, Max, on lawsuits or legal? Okay. Well, now moving to, um, building inspector contract, and I will read. Um, and this is a, I'm adding language from what was in the posting. The town board may go into closed session during the meeting for purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, conducting other specified public business, which it is or is likely to become involved in accordance with Wisconsin statute 19.851E. After the completion of the closed session, the board will come back into the open session to act upon the discussion in the closed session or otherwise complete the business of the meeting before adjournment. And I would add that it is also under section 19.851G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Do I have a motion to go into closed session for this purpose?
I'll make a motion, we go into closed session for this purpose.
Second.
Moved and seconded, this is a roll call vote, Mike Anderson?
Yes.
Baxter? Susan Brenner?
Yes.
Samantha Dobson?
Yes.
Carlson, yes?
Okay.
Okay.